My microphone. We've got a call to order, the January 2022, and I knew I was going to get that wrong, but I got it right. 2022 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. If we can start that off with a roll call, please.
Brian Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Wilkett?
Here.
Mr. Harwell?
Here.
Mr. Resbento? Mr. Armstead?
Here.
Deputy Chief Brandon Broadhead?
Here.
Jennifer Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Contreras?
Here.
Stuart Roberts?
Here.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from December 14. And I apologize, I was about to say, I didn't recall receiving. Okay, we will pass that on then to the February meeting. All right, communications, anything from you, Mr. Wilson, as vice chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's nothing from me. With that, we'll go on to old business. The first case that we're hearing tonight is case AD 21-12-03. The developer, or the name of the development is Homewood Hotel LLC. This is a request for an amendment to a final development plan. Whoever is presenting on this case, step forward, please.
Good evening, I'm Mike Moron, 402 Office Park Drive. This change to the development plan is reflective only of the fact that Edgar's Bakery is no longer part of the mixed-use development. So that building has been removed from the development plan, and that, to my knowledge, is the only change.
Okay. Mr. Moron, I know you weren't here last month, but where we left off with this case, we had had initial presentation, and then we had a public portion of the hearing, and then we closed the public portion and had questions from the commission members, and I think we kind of hit the pause button there. So before we move on, I wanted to see if our members had any more questions, and then we were going to address a proffer that had been discussed last month.
Okay.
Okay, so, and again, last month, and Ms. Andrews, you might want to address this, I know there was a discussion about a proposed proffer for some signage on that remote parking lot.
Yeah, I just asked for some signage to recognize the remote lot as hotel parking, just to claim it as hotel parking. I was not asking for anything obtrusive, unattractive, punitive, punishing, just, you know, my suggestion was something wrought iron, you know, we've made efforts in the city to brand with our logo and make it look nice. That's simply what I was asking for, is something that would recognize this as hotel remote parking.
I'm having a little trouble understanding, Jennifer, but if you're saying signage that recognizes the parking as remote parking for the hotel, yes, I'm willing to do that.
All right, I guess, subject to that proffer, I entertain a motion to approve.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Okay, if you would call the roll.
Ms. Wilkett?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Contreras?
Yes.
Brandon Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, this will go onto the City Council with, I guess, an A to zero, I didn't count the number, a favorable recommendation, they'll make that determination, I guess, next month.
Sure.
And I guess while we have this opportunity, if you come up to speak tonight, before you start speaking, if you could sign in on the roll with your name and address, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to new business. The first case is RZ 22-01-02. That's a request to rezone at 2821 Central Avenue. The owner, applicant is City of Homewood. And are you going to present on this? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Kale Smith with the City of Homewood. In 2014, we resoned, intended to rezone the parcel where the grocery is, to M1. That did happen, but unfortunately, the legal description took the entire site to M1, and now we would like to retroactively get back and fix that and rezone the area where Little Donkey used to be and the office space that is there now next to the grocery, rezone that back to C4.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. This is a public hearing, if anyone wants to speak on this case, please come forward now. All right, seeing no one from the public, we will open up, we'll close the public portion and open up to questions from members of the commission. No one wants to grill Mr. Smith about this.
I was thinking about all kinds of questions, in the interest of time.
If there are no questions, would anyone be interested in making a motion?
Motion to approve RC, I'm sorry, move to approve RC 22-01-02.
Sure.
Call the roll, please. There was Mr. Contreras.
Ms. Wilkett?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Contreras? Brandon Broadhead? Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Smith, you can go tell the rest of the city that their case passed. Okay, the next new case is case RZ 21, I'm sorry, 22-01-03. It is another requested rezone at 3006 Cook Street. The application, or the applicant is BRE Cook Street LLC slash John Abernathy. And again, if you would write in your name and address on the pad, please.
Do you happen to know if Brian's here tonight? I had emailed him.
Yes, John, I got it.
All right. I didn't see him. Okay, thanks. John Abernathy, 303 Ascot Road. I'm here presenting on behalf of my company, BRE Cook Street, Blackwater Real Estate. I've got a brief presentation I want to show you. Okay, Brian, so this property is on Cook Street, and I think you're all aware, I was here before, and so bringing a slightly different plan to you. I won't go too long, since I believe you've seen it, but this slide was just to show you the varied uses and varied colors around us, the apartments and office, primarily with the retail up on the road, and our property is, again, zone retail C2. Okay, Brian. This is a existing condition of the house that's been this way for a long time. And this is a survey that shows where the house sits on the property, just to give you a perspective of the size of the lot and kind of the orientation of the house that sits on the lot. And this is our C2 zoning on the west side of Cook Street. Okay, so again, our request is for R7, we're down zoning from, to a less intensive use. Previously, we were coming to you before going to the BZA for a setback variance, and when we did not receive your recommendation here, we pulled it off the City Council and off the BZA. And so this plan that I'm going to show you tonight does not, is not going to request any setback variances from the BZA, so it will meet, if it's approved, it will meet the R7 zoning setbacks. The star, obviously, is our property, and our intention, which I'll show you in a moment, is the orange side is going to, is the Cook Street side, that's where our access will be from. There is access in the blue area, easement access, through alleys, through the, next to the office users, but we are not showing any access or use of that, those easements. Okay. Or right-ofways, I guess, maybe. So this is the plan I showed you previously, our intention of this was, we wanted to orient north towards Oxmoor, felt like it was the best look for us. It did not meet your approval, and so we have come to show you a slightly different plan. Go ahead. So some of the comments that I heard, and there may be more, one was asking about an R5 zoning, one was asking, you know, was talking about a three-foot setback, which we had on the front and rear, felt that was maybe too tight, ability to have three bedrooms in those sized units that we had on that plant was a concern to someone, and then just some general comments about drainage and maybe trying to maximize the grass area, pervious surface, were some of the comments that we heard. So this was our, is our revised plan. So basically, we've turned the units facing Cook Street, and they've been reduced in size, so the R7 zoning requires a 1,200 square feet unit, so these are 1,240 square feet, so just over the minimum that is required. It will face Cook Street, and we've shown a drive to access the parking, because that's our understanding of what is required. We could, you know, add more green and pull it up on the road, but the parking spaces would have to exit and enter off Cook Street, so this has a circulation drive on it, and then otherwise, we're maximizing the green we best we can outside of the footprint of the units. This meets all setbacks for R7, 40 on the rear, 24 on the front, 12 on the north, because it faces a C1 and zero on the south, because it faces another residential. And I'll show you that one more time after I tell you this, but, so just quick answers, I think we discussed in the last meeting, that R5 really, the requirements in R5 related to size of lots and those matters, didn't really make this an appropriate zoning for multifamily. So R7 was the most appropriate, again, this meets all the requirements, I'll show you in a moment, but the smaller units, we don't have the ability to do three bedrooms anymore, so that's sort of off the table. And then the smaller footprints, and we tried to add as large a green area in the rear as we could. So there's the plan changing from what we heard to a different, different look. So this is similar to what I showed you before, but just the style of the units, we would be going for low country theme, so that can be varied things, but that's what we would be going for in varied in these six units. Just if you're wondering, because it's 15 feet wide, and you're wondering what does that look like, because that's a little less common than you would see in a larger townhome, the left is sort of a 15-foot wide unit, so you can see what you can get in that as far as a look, and then the right are some other pictures that you can do, so it would be, that's what, say, a first-floor unit would look like. You can't see this well, but on the left is a first-floor footprint, which is exactly what you saw in that left picture, which is a kitchen, a stairwell, you come in the back and you have an open kitchen, and then just, this is really to address the comments about three-bedroom, and you can see on the right, it's a two, that's the upstairs, 600 square feet, it shows two bedrooms, and they're, unless we're really creative, they're even sharing a bathroom, so it's going to be, we're going to have to get a little creative, maybe one shower, but two, you know, but two lavatories, so we'll do our best there, but two units, two bedrooms is what would be in these units. And then lastly, this is just some pictures I took this morning of the status of the upgrade to the multifamily units, they're to the right, I don't know if they're apartment or townhome, but they look like town, attached townhome units, is what they look like, they have stairs, if you may have seen them, they have stairs that go straight up when you walk in, looks like first-in-level units, so they're basically two townhomes. And so this is the house to the left, and so it would be basically a continuation of the townhomes down the hill. This is the rear of the retail unit to the right. And I have one more, just, again, just looking, this was before it was renovated, but this is Cook Street in your front, it's your retail on the side, and if you can, as you notice, you have apartment on the left, and you have apartment across the street, and you have apartment on Cook Street, so it appears like it's appropriate to the area. So that's the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy. This is a public hearing, if anyone wants, from the public wants to speak to this case, this is your opportunity.
Hello, I'm Brock Tompkins, my address is 702 Belmont Road in Homewood, and I am the property owner directly behind the townhomes, and I was here in October as well. Just, you know, we've turned the property 90 degrees to make it fit zoning now, but it still doesn't address any of the issues that the surrounding property owners, and there's three of us that have parking in the area, I don't know about the other ones across the street, but the three of us that are to the north and to the northwest and to the west share parking, and we have for many, many years, and we've gotten along fantastically. Turning these 90 degrees still doesn't change the fact that there's 12 parking spots in a tightly condensed area where there is 12 parking spaces for six. There's six units still there, there were six units on the agenda last time he brought it before the board, and all we've done is turn it 90 degrees and make them a little bit smaller. So there's nothing that addresses the concern for me as a business owner to address the congestion and the additional traffic that will come through and be in that, be in those, be in our parking and in our neighbors' parking and in the other owners around there's parking. So that's my concerns. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Hey, guys, I'm Billy Wade, I live at 1426 Manhattan Street, part of the family that owns 1903 Oxford Road, which is on the map, you can see it's right next to this property. Basically, what Brock just went over is just still the same concerns about making sure that we don't have overflow traffic end up on our condensed area. I really, unfortunately, I don't really have anything else to add, I think we really addressed it, that the project was turned 90 degrees, it looks like they've made an improvement there, but as far as overflow and our tight area, we're still concerned about overflow of parking, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to ask a question of Mr. Tompkins and Mr. Wade, I feel like he did address access, because before he was, it was, you know, now he's turned the back of the property to you all, he's not accessing through any alley that you all are using, he's shrunk the size of the unit, so it's not a three-bedroom, so it's a two-bedroom, so there's two parking spaces per unit. I feel like he has addressed some of your concerns, do you not feel that way?
That part was addressed, that the access for the alley, that was a big deal, so yes, that did improve.
And also the size, because before there were three bedrooms, and so this, you know, 12 units, I mean, 12 parking spaces, six units, but there were three bedrooms, so I do feel like he's addressed that as well. You know, are you concerned, do you not feel like your parking needs could not be met by, you know, signage and towing and, you know?
Certainly try, yeah. Certainly try, there's, you know, that's always been a big thing in Homewood about parking, just lived in such a tight condensed area.
Sure, absolutely.
So, yeah, I believe with signage, it could, it could, and enough warnings, maybe.
Yeah, absolutely, I think the word gets out, you know, you boot and you tow, and I, you know, I think the word gets out.
Yeah, you just hate, you hate to go to those measures. Anytime, other buildings that we have, anytime I've threatened towing, it's, it never turns out good for any of us.
When is y'all's biggest parking demand, if you're, if both y'all's locations?
Well, so my, all right, so you have Dr. Friday, which is the dentist office, he is immediately touching this property. I'm across the alley from him at 1903 Oxmoor, which is the, which is a yellow building, and it is, I'm guessing here, it's approximately 2,000 square feet, and it has a guest house or cottage in the back that's another rental property. So you have, it's some type of, it's a consulting business that's in there, and they are very limited in spacing already, like, we're already fighting parking as it is, and they've had to put up signage, and we've had to work out with the neighbors who parks where. Dr. Friday, I don't, I mean, if you ever have any interest driving ever in his alley, he's got a sign that looks like a billboard, "Do not park in my parking spot." It's pretty.
No, it's just the timing of it, I mean, is it from eight to five, or is it, when's the demand for?
So as far as I'm, as far as my building's concerned, that is an appointment-only establishment. There is a law office in the carriage house on the lower level that they are open all day, but the consulting main office is all by appointment only.
Is the concern mostly about access? So I guess, I don't say an elevation here, but it looks like to me, the parking concerns, I guess, are that they, people would park back there and then walk across this grass to the.
Correct, and Jennifer, to your point, we've all had, Billy, Dr. Friday, and us, we've all had signs up for years, and we've all amicably got along, is trying to enforce people from parking in there, and it inevitably happens, it's happened from the apartments that are south of John's property, they've parked in our parking before, and, you know, for whatever reason, and so we have to enforce that, and all we're doing is we're creating six more units in a situation where there's already not parking, and we're going to put 12 spaces there and assume everybody's just going to have two cars, and nobody's ever going to have anybody over. My, to answer your question, normal hours of our business is normal business hours, 7:30 to 5:00, 5:30 Monday through Friday, not too much on Saturday unless we're coming and doing work, but during that time, we do have a large flow of business, we try to be good neighbors with everybody, we double park, we park on the street, we try to limit as much as we can, and then, Jennifer, I just have to disagree, to have to get into the part of trying to administer parking, and I don't want to put a boot on somebody's car, I don't want to be, I don't want to be that neighbor, and we don't have that now in the area, and I'm fine with John building something there, I just don't think it needs to be six units. And that is, that, I mean, we're talking about a congestion thing, we're talking about parking, two might meet the code for whatever the code's going to be, but two doesn't meet the requirement for what, really, what the area needs, and we all know about parking issues in Homewood, so I just don't think we need to compound the issue.
So I guess parking administration probably, yeah, I mean, that may not be appealing, there's fencing or anything like that, make it more appealing to you?
Well, I mean, I would assume there would, I assume you'd be putting in a fence, but, you know, does that, does that, does that keep park, does that keep people from parking in our, in our area and going in? I can't answer that.
Makes it a lot less convenient, I mean.
It makes it less convenient, but if there's nowhere to park in the front.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if I'm a resident, if this gets approved, if overflow parking's going to be across the street, that's an interesting.
Well, I mean, potentially, and I mean, that's their battle to fight, I'm fighting my, I'm fighting my battle.
Oh, no. Your vision just goes easy, right?
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely, I see that. I see that, but, you know, it just, once it's done, there's no one doing it, so.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Are these units going to be rental or for sale?
Mr. Abernathy, if you come up and if you could, I'll have some questions for you, if you want to address anything that has been brought up.
Okay.
Are these units going to be for sale or are they going to be rental?
Rental is what our intent was, but they could be, they could be sold, you know, but that's not what we intend, but, you know, most people will tell you they're for sale, and then they could rent them later, too, so I just, that's what our intention is, is to rent them, but the way they're set up, you could, you could have a fee simple lot and sell them, but that's not what we plan to do.
Do you have any space in your parking lot for a visitor parking lot, or for a visitor, you know, one or two spaces for visitors?
We don't right now, no, we have, we just meet code right now.
What's your projected rental rate?
That's a tough one, because since I've been in this process of trying to get approved, construction costs have gone up probably 10, 15% in six months, so we were hoping to get it in the mid 2000s is where we would hope to do, but now we've lowered the size of the units and costs are up, by the time we get there, I don't know, I'm hoping it doesn't creep up into the upper 2000s. I'm hoping it stays at that mid 2000s.
And are you planning on putting a fence around the back?
Haven't got there, but can, last time when there was some concern, we were more than willing to put a fence up around the property, yeah, more than willing to do that. I think to your point, obviously, we don't have the legal right to park on anybody's property, and we have to meet code, but you're right, there's retail parking across the street, that's most likely where, you know, if someone was doing something they shouldn't, that's probably what they would do, yeah.
And when do you think your parking demand's going to be the highest?
Well, typically on these, it's, you know, when our single-family, you know, residential is highest, which is typically 5:00 PM to, in the morning, most people are going to school or going to work.
The neighbors are?
Typically residential is exactly opposite of the office, yes, to your point, I'm sure there could be somebody that stays at home and works from home, but most of the time it's opposite.
Okay, and as you know, Mr. Abernathy, we're, on zoning issues, we make recommendations to City Council, that will be ostensibly next month.
Yes, I understand.
There's no way to whittle it down to less than 16 units?
No, and I think I said that when I was here last time with you, we just, it doesn't make sense, the property values and construction costs are just too high right now, so this was our attempt to get, you know, the overall square footage density of the property is much less than it was before, because the units were closer, I think there were 2,500 square feet plus units, and so now they're 1,200 square feet, so the density is much, much less.
If there are no further questions, I entertain a motion.
Make motion to approve RC 22-01-03.
Second.
Okay, if you could call the roll, please.
Ms. Wilkett?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Contreras?
Yes.
Is that you, Brandon Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Abernathy, your case will go to the City Council with, I think, a seven-to-one vote in favor recommending your project, or your rezoning. Thank you. Okay, our next case is another rezone request, it's RZ 22-01-04. The applicant is Streisner, I might be mispronouncing that, Investment Company, and it relates to a property at 2916 Linden Avenue in Homewood. Whoever's presenting on this case, please come forward.
How are y'all doing tonight? Mine's pretty simple. I don't know if I, I probably didn't submit a presentation like I should have.
Before you start, if you would just state your name and address, yes.
506 Dexter Avenue, Mountain Brook, Alabama.
Thank you.
With Streisner Investment Company, we've got a place over at Hallman, and we've got another commercial spot. And this spot is our second commercial location on Dexter, or on Linden. And we are wanting to get it rezoned to C4. We are right on the cutoff line from C1, which is currently zoned. Some things that we are having trouble with, which I'll be here, or Thursday for the variance meeting, the setbacks on C1 are 15 feet from each side. The property is only 50 feet wide. So, any addition or new construction will only be able to be 20 feet wide, which really, I mean, from a business perspective, is useless as far as putting something in. But we really want to copy what Christopher Architect put in across the street there, the golf shop, about a $600,000 building there. And I think retail would be the best bet if we're going to put that much money into a place like this. Any questions? It's a pretty easy one, hopefully.
Sure, we have to let the public address any issues they have, but then we'll call you back up. Okay, this is a public hearing. If any member from the public wishes to address this case, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll call you back up, Mr. Streisner. And the board or the commission will ask you any questions they have.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Streisner, I'm curious. Do you, do you have an intended usage?
We really want to just have more options than office space, which is currently in cemetery and some other weird governmental buildings. Or just going around Homewood, you see a lot of office space for rent, and I think you're seeing that everywhere with the changing dynamic and working from home. And so, and the other retail spaces we do have that are zoned for office, we're having a very hard time finding anybody to try to get in there just for office space. It's really mostly retail. So, if we could increase our chances of getting a tenant in quicker with retail, I think we'd want to be. And also, I mean, if you drive down that street, I don't know if y'all are very familiar with the property, but it's almost like they use that alley as just an arbitrary line to cut it off. And then the space next to us is an office park, and that makes sense. But ours, forward-facing Linden, it really doesn't make sense for an office. But yes, we want to get something retail, and I believe the last two people before we had ownership, it was a retail spot and a hair salon. So, I guess they were grandfathered in with the new rezoning. That's what, a long answer to your short question.
So, you don't have a tenant currently? You don't have somebody on the hook? You're just saying this is...
Right. We're probably five, six months out after we had to remove the asbestos, but we didn't want to order building materials yet before we got approved. But no, we do not have a tenant lined up.
I can appreciate the change to some retail use. And it looks like there are elevations and draws you have here are very complimentary. I guess my only concern is going, C4 opens itself up to a lot of bad things, too, if it don't fit as well as...
Right.
As you would hope, right, over in that area. Was there any thought about going to C2, still do you see retail, but doesn't open yourselves up to liquor stores, everything else?
Well, so, we would be open to that. Talking with the people on the fourth floor and sitting down with them, they said it's a no-brainer, go C4. And that'll be your easy deal.
Nothing alive's easy, no.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, I was wanting it to be as, you know, easy and pain-free as possible. I really haven't, I didn't look into C2. I guess you're, you open yourself up to liquor stores, which...
Well, C4 gives us, because that gives you more...
Right.
Broader things to put in.
Now, is this C4 or C4A that opens up to liquor? C4 does? That'd be, have to be one expensive liquor store to be paying.
No, I get it. I guess that's a concern, right?
Right, right.
I mean, looking at the retail, it's great.
Right.
You don't even have any issue there. It's a matter of what type of retail becomes the...
Exactly. Well, that, that would be, if for some reason, you know, nothing goes good with this, and that, that is a problem, but possible liquor store going in, I see no problems with us resubmitting it as a C2. And hopefully get the variance Thursday, just so we can go ahead and get the building going and then worry about the rezoning after the fact. But yes, we're definitely open to that. Any, anything to get just a little bit away from office space would be great.
So, I guess the question is, is that something?
Yeah, that was going to ask. How's the fourth floor feel about that?
I think the concern was mentioned earlier was that it might be considered spot zoning, because it would be really an island in a C, of C1 and C4. And I guess to address the other issue, you know, across the street, for a good distance, you have C4. I'm not aware of any liquor stores going up where they can do it, but I understand the concern.
Is that the only objectionable use? I mean, was there anything else that was...
Theoretically, you have C3, you get bars, restaurants, fast food, hotels, liquor stores. I mean, yeah, you end up...
C4, gas station as well.
Yeah, you end up opening yourself to a lot more harder uses than what I think you're intending to do, right? And so, to me, it's not a matter of, I think, what you're...
Right.
But you're just open, you're opening Pandora's box a little bit, or C2.
Yeah, you've got to limit it.
Kind of fits more with it now. There's an argument whether the whole area should be C2 as opposed to C4. That's a different discussion. So, at the moment, you're, you're not interested in carrying over to discuss the C2 as a possibility of a first place, right? You're interested in us voting tonight?
Well, I'd love y'all's recommendation on it. Would y'all think I do have some validity here with a C4, just with everything else around it being C4?
I guess we really can't answer that.
I guess, yeah, you can't answer, yeah. Can't give your votes out, yeah.
That is a concern that we've tried to stop completely. There is C2 zoning further up, Oxford. It's not like that exists up there. I guess procedurally, is it something that you can amend the zoning request at a meeting, or does it have to require resubmitment?
They have to be noticed. I'm pretty sure it has to be noticed, and they have to come back next month.
But you're six months out anyway.
That, as long as we get the variance Thursday, just on the setbacks, to get the product in and starting to build, you know, zoning is kind of on the back burner, but we wanted to go ahead and address it. But I think for this one, we'll go ahead and keep it C4, just in case, because I know spot zoning can be a little difficult sometimes and for other people some wrong ways. So, I think if y'all wouldn't mind voting on the C4.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, guys, for your time.
We need to, we'll vote on your case once we have a motion to do so. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve RZ 22-01-04.
If you could call the roll, please.
Ms. Wilkett?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
No.
Mr. Armstead?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn Harris?
Yes.
Brandon Rockhead?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. So, your case will go to the City Council next month with a 6-2 favorable recommendation.
Perfect. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, our final case for tonight, new matter for tonight, is AD 22-01-05. The applicant is Fay Palmisano. This relates to, it's like a residence at 521 Oxford Circle. Once you've signed in, if you could just state your names for, and addresses for the record, please.
I'm Fay Palmisano. I'm just requesting to build a porch that meets on the side of my house. It meets the variance recommendation or requirements. The problem is that when that street, Oxford Circle, was, how do I say that?
All right, Miss Palmisano, yeah.
It's a friend of hers, not mine. Do you want me to write my name in?
If you would please, and then state your name and address as well.
I'm Dan Sims. We've been friends for a long time. And what she's essentially saying is, when the street was developed, the setbacks were tighter on this one street than other areas. So, it was done, I guess, similar to a putt, where they had wide leeway where they could set setbacks. And when she went to get the permit for the porch, it meets all of the current setback requirements. And they waited like, I think it was a day or two. They had, they, they described it as having to go to the vault to find, because this is 30-some odd years old, to find the paperwork where it was originally zoned. And they said, "Everything you're doing seems to meet all of our requirements, but because you're on that particular street, it has to go to, you know, for your approval." So, so the setbacks are currently 10 feet on the side, 20 on the rear, and that's, you know, we exceed that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else before we open it up to the public? All right, you might as well just stand there unless someone busts through the door. This is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak to this case is invited to come forward now. Seeing none, if the applicant would come back up, oh, there you go. Answer any questions the commission has for you.
What are you, you're going toward your own driveway?
No, the, on the map. Yeah, the, there's, there's not going to be a driveway there. The driveway existing, there was, there's no garage there now. So, all this is doing is putting a side porch so that she's got a way to enter. And she's got some very small house dogs, I call them, that it gives them a place to get out of the rain and be outside at the same time.
But what's there right now? I mean, driveway, unfortunately.
Nothing. There's nothing.
Did there used to be a driveway on the map or...
Yeah, um, there's a driveway leading up to where the porch would go, but there's nothing there on that side yard.
Is that your driveway?
Yes, it's my driveway.
Right. Yeah, it doesn't encroach on the neighbors.
It doesn't, uh-uh.
No.
Just looking at the map, and it's a fairly crude map, are there other residences on this circle with similar type porches or covered porches?
Exactly, straight across the street, they have it. And with less than the, than the 10 feet variance.
And a lot of the houses have garages that are literally a foot or two from the property line. But again, it was explained to her that because that was done 30 years ago under that blanket approval, when the, I think one builder built every house. And that's how all that came about. But, you know, they said, "Everything new going forward, we want to meet the new setback requirements." And they said, "Yours does that, but you still have to get approval."
I was talking to Nick Sims about it over the weekend, and he said, you know, "Look at how close his is." You know, he and his neighbor are basically a foot apart. I didn't bring pictures or anything, but they're very, very close.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
If you could call the roll, please. Thank you, Mr. Harwell.
Ms. Wilkett?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn Harris?
Yes.
Brandon Rockhead?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. Okay, your case passes eight to zero. Thank you. And Mr. Smith, I didn't mention this to you earlier, but your case will now go to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. I just wanted, before we close the record, I want to make sure that was on. We'll see. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, we adjourned.